To order, our Chairman Mary Era Wood is not with us tonight. She's ill, so Buddy has asked that I lead this meeting, which I will, and we'll begin with the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
So if you'll bow our heads, Heavenly Father, the citizens of this county have trusted us to make decisions for the betterment of them. Let us honor that trust. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Okay, first item on our agenda is the adoption or an and/or deletion of and/or additions to the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda, Buddy?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, if not, I'll take a motion to accept the agenda as presented and seconded and approved. Second item on our agenda is discussion of ARPA funds, premium pay, comp class implementation, capital purchases, and other. Mr. Inglesy, if you will enlighten us about where we are with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Mr. Livingston. This was requested to come to Finance Committee as a preliminary discussion.
My hearing is terrible. Could you get the microphone a little closer and speak a little louder?
So this is coming to committee for preliminary discussion. On this, in your packet is a breakdown of what we've received in ARPA funds and what we have spent in ARPA funds. I think you've heard me say before that it will be good for us to get to a point where we can create a spending plan for the remaining funds, and that it might be prudent to wait until the November referendum results are in due to some of the capital needs, such as in particular the detention center needs. And so we haven't had much discussion. Staff hasn't engaged in much internal discussion, just with that in mind, that it may be prudent to wait. However, some things have come to the surface that I think council has an interest in and, as well as staff, and some of those items are premium pay. That's been a topic of discussion. We also have upcoming expense anticipated for implementation of the compensation and classification study that will have an expense that's not currently budgeted, and ARPA funds could be a source of helping us at least initially get implementation of the compensation and classification study. We also have continuing capital purchases needs, especially in public safety, as well as other ideas floating around for use of ARPA funds. And so I think as a matter of priority, council's interest in a premium paid distribution was needing some committee discussion and whether or not this committee wanted to bring that forward to council as a recommendation. So with that, we did a little bit of research. There was a question that was brought up about volunteer pay, and there was some, initially some indication that the final rule that came down was going to prohibit counties from a payment to volunteers. We've dug a little deeper. We've spoken with NACO as a county that received 10 million or less. We have the flexibility to make that payment if council chooses to, so that may be good information for your discussion as you consider whether or not to recommend to council a second premium pay.
Well, my personal opinion is, and I was looking, it seems like we only did $1,000 for volunteers, if I'm correct, based on last one. But I mean, I would love, when we're looking at right now, trying to keep, retain, recruit, all of the above, I wish we could bump that to $1,500. I was looking at the line item, what it cost us in premium pay for December 2021, and Debbie, I'm assuming that included all of that at that time. Is that correct?
That included salary for age?
I would love to see us bump that one to 1,500. Again, it's, it would be a little more than $600,000 if we did it exactly, duplicated exactly what we did, but they had $500 for fire and rescue EMS.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Christopher because we had just been told that these funds were not to be used for volunteers, and I appreciate you, staff, whatever, not accepting that and going further and finding a way to make this happen. And I totally agree with Buddy. I think we need to increase that amount. Originally, we did give 1,000 for the volunteers, all in favor of 1,500 as a recommendation going forward. And we also have these other amounts. Buddy, you want to comment on what we gave before as to whether or not? I know Mary had emailed both you and me and said she was in favor of what we had done before, but with that being said.
Well, again, going back to our people who, one, y'all, I'm finding out our law enforcement is getting badly underpaid comparative. Everybody keeps honing up. Every time we move, somebody else is moving. But, you know, 2,500, again, 500 is not a significant amount, but hey, if we could get it to 3,000, I mean, I would almost agree to bump everybody up 500. And again, it's not local taxpayer dollars, and it's just a kind gesture to all these people who have had to alter their schedules, work their schedules. When you look at frontline law enforcement, when they arrested somebody, put somebody in the car, they didn't know whether it was COVID then. And even now, especially when you talk about going out to houses, I mean, with the drugs and stuff. I mean, we are asking a lot of our people, and again, is $500 per person going to make that much difference in the overall loss of our funds?
I could do it based on last year's and give you an estimate.
I would appreciate that. Personally, I mean, less than our only two here tonight, but I just, I just think it's a kind of gesture to.
I agree totally, and if we could have that, I mean, we can do, this still has to go before council. And so if you could have those numbers ready whenever it goes before council, Buddy, if you're willing to make that into a motion.
I'll make that into a motion.
I'm willing to second it, which makes it unanimous from our committee, and go forward with the, an additional 500 per group. 2,500 to 3,000, 15 to 2, and 1,000 to 15.
That's great. One other item maybe for consideration is the dates under the previous was April 20th through the 21st. Do you want to keep those dates? This was applicable to employees that worked between April 20th, April 21st, and they have to be a current employee, so if they've separated, they wouldn't be eligible. Is that the dates that you want to stick with? Is there a difference?
I think we stick with the same terms when it was actually at its peak.
Yeah.
Are there any other details, Karen or Debbie, that?
Yeah, we have one with Dave. Is it him you want this paid for? So I think you work it with him, our schedule that we have now. You looking for, before the end of the year?
I would say as soon as possible.
We'll, we'll need to look at our schedule and see if we can fit it in because we have a volunteer stipend run that has to go in between our two week schedule, so we need to do it in between a rate, the two rate that we're scheduled.
It would be great if we could get it out before Thanksgiving, so that when people do Black Friday shopping, et cetera, they would have that check available.
Does this require three readings?
No, sir.
Okay.
We get paid on November the 11th, and then we'll get paid on Wednesday before the Thanksgiving. So it may have to occur between October and November.
That, no, that Wednesday in November, if it could.
To make it work, then we'll give you that by the time you have your council meeting.
We should be able to discuss this at our next council meeting, and I would expect to.
I mean, if we could get it, yeah, quicker the better.
Thank you. On the similar, on the same agenda item, just by way of update, the comp and classification study is continuing to move forward. It's taken a long time to get the data that was necessary for the consultants in a format that they could use. So it took a lot of years of historical data that was imperfect in a lot of ways. And Debbie, Peak and HR spent many hours complying with the consultant's requirements to get that data updated. Some of it was missing, some of it was incomplete, some of it was inaccurate. Now that that is in a usable form, the next step is for some interviews and surveys. So they'll be issuing an electronic survey. They'll also be onsite for two days. Friday, September 30th, we have our quarterly meeting with the elected officials and directors. They will be here for that meeting, and they will present their surveying process and how we can get the most out of that, that process. And they will also be interviewing the sheriff and other elected officials that day. And then they'll be back the following Monday to do additional interviews and continue to collect information. So we're hoping that certainly before the end of the year, they will be wrapping up or close to wrapping up. But they did promise a estimate of the cost of implementation in advance of our executive committee meeting, which I think is October 11th, if I remember. It's been rescheduled to October 11th. So I believe we'll have a rough number from them in terms of the cost of implementation. And I've had a couple of these conversations, but for your benefit, benefit of the public, we don't know how much implementation is going to cost, but it's going to be very imperative that we take action quickly, and we don't have a budgeted amount for implementation. And ARP funds could be a source of temporary funding to get us to a permanent place of funding implementation. For example, we know that we have some new revenues coming to the county over the next two to three years from FLO agreements that have been abated or otherwise were delayed, and we will begin to collect those revenues to the tune of about a million dollars. And that will help us be able to permanently implement compensation classification. Now, we don't want to rely on all of that money because we're trying to use a portion of FLO fees for a capital fund and for economic development fund. But at least a portion of those fees could be expected to be a permanent way of funding the implementation. But we could use ARP money this year and next year to bridge the gap until we get there.
When you say implementation, now, we already have budgeted and are paying our contractor to accumulate the information. Now, the, the implementation of that would be, I'm assuming that we're going to have comparative data between our county, contiguous counties, and also counties within the state of like size and budget. And I would also expect that that's going to take some, some discussion on implementation. I wouldn't expect that to occur probably in one meeting. I would expect that to get some.
Yes, sir.
Some discussion and.
That's a reasonable expectation.
That, South County Association of Canines already puts out a manual that has.
That South County Association of Counties already puts out a manual that has all of what you basically just said. Available to, I think the county administrators gets one.
They do for elected officials and county officials of like the director level. But they don't drill down to the individual, like Public Works, uh, equipment operator level, do they? I mean, it's not.
I think it's pretty complex. I think, I think it's in there. It says it's an orange, it's an orange pink color. Buy that too.
It goes down to the twenty levels that the counties submit.
Yep.
And it includes like in Public Works.
It's got all of them, right.
Long.
That's what I said, you know, sometimes.
I haven't seen them, so if, if, if we're going to be looking at this data and that's comparative data, maybe it's good that all county council members have a copy of that that they can look at.
Sure.
You can get enough for us to.
We can send you the link to it because it's one of their publications available on their website. We can print one out for you. That is one resource that the consultant will be utilizing. They will also be looking at our private sector competitors because there is some competition there as well. And that'll all be presented to council. The consultant will come, present their findings and recommendations to council. And then perhaps what we could do is include a discussion in a workshop. I would imagine it's going to be expensive enough that we probably will want to phase it in over two-year period. Maybe even a three-year period, depending on how expensive. But the idea would be their recommendations would tell us, you've got detention center officers making fifteen dollars an hour. They really need to be at whatever seventeen, eighteen, whatever it is. And they would do that kind of analysis across the board and then their recommendation will have a price tag. You can adjust, you can accept their recommendation, you can adjust their recommendation, we can phase in their recommendation. And I think you're right, I think that will require at least a meeting or two or maybe even more to come up with what's the right path for us.
Debbie, you found that book, am I correct, it's all in there?
Um, yeah, it's a lot of it in there. Like the, the problem with kind of the song is like, I'm not giving them the share, but they call different people, different things when it comes to. You know what I'm talking about here? You might not, you might not have a cord pole in this school or something like that. Or you only have heavy equipment operators in this school and not, uh, just truck drivers, you know what I mean?
That's, that's the problem, I'm playing with it. I mean, it's, it's a good, it's a good reference, but not just with us.
Oh, yeah, but that was just amazing.
When I say us, Newbury County, it's like, we may call something different, not even, even law enforcement, but.
You're uniform.
Take into consideration multiple jobs that somebody may have. If somebody could be, like in law enforcement, somebody could be captain in one agency, he only has one focus. But another agency might have four or five different focuses. I mean, it's a good reference.
It is. And you got a detention, and here you got a detention center one and two. And, you know, it's just, just different titles.
Well, it's a good, it's a good, it's, it's good comparative information. You can never have too much information.
It's done by populations, so you're like.
The other thing it does take into consideration, well, I think they grouped into size. And like, we may be the same size as the county that doesn't have the industrial base that we've got. Like Samson and Louis Ridge that brings all these people in from, um, other counties.
You're in the county with Williamsburg, Marlboro, Mary, Jasper, Edgefield, Dillon, and Colton, and Jasper.
And that is good, but especially for law enforcement, basically for everybody. Your immediate contiguous counties are the ones that's more important because that's where we're going to lose it too, if we're going to lose it.
That's where your competition for employees. But you also, all that is good information, we need to have all of it.
But there again, I guess we're paying a pretty premium price for somebody to do that already, so.
I think it's on the web, on their website too.
Anything else, buddy?
I think that's all. On that particular topic, I got one.
Anything, yep.
So capital purchases, um, you know, we use some, some ARPA funds for capital purchases this year, which allowed us to retire some debt, some debt and some lease purchase promissory notes. And, uh, and that's good. But, um, you know, Tom, I think everybody's heard and Tommy will give a report at the upcoming Public Safety Committee meeting about the age of the rolling stock. I think he did a report back in February when we did some budget planning. But I, you know, the ARPA funds may represent an opportunity to do a little catch up on rolling stock. So we'll continue to keep that as a priority consideration for the use of ARPA funds moving forward. We have, and then the final comment I'll just make is that, uh, under other, I would, um, just let you know that at Executive Committee, when we meet on the eleventh, we'll be discussing some facilities issues. And there may be an opportunity for use of ARPA funds to do some shifting and some renovation or at least some rethinking of our facilities. In particular, the DHEC, DSS building is something that our capital plan, we work with Urban to create a five-year capital plan. That building's going to require almost five hundred thousand dollars worth of work over the next five years. And we'll be discussing with committee if, if that's a wise use of five hundred thousand dollars or if there's an opportunity to, uh, leave that building and get it back on the tax rolls and utilize some of our other spaces. So that discussion will happen at Executive Committee. But in order to fund that, ARP funds may be a good source of, of doing that.
On that topic, I would like to see us do as much as we could for fire and rescue, especially fire. Because right now, from what I'm hearing, we've got several departments that's going to meet that ten-year, I think, ten-year age limit on, on some of the vehicles. Which then our citizens either will pay through it through insurance or pay through it for it through taxes. So if we can see what Tommy outlines that we can get done here, then in the long term, if we do what we had talked about with FLO monies, then we may be able to buy enough time that we would have FLO monies coming in that we may never, I won't say never, that was a long time. But we may not have to push the purchase of rolling stock to the taxpayers, at least for a period of time. If that makes sense. I don't know how much, again, you look at one fire truck, I think there's one fire engine that we approved at the last was three hundred and fifty thousand. You don't get a whole lot when you go to.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I was looking at what's on our ARPA fund sheet here.
I think one, one pumper, I think is about to turn ten years old. The thing that's so frustrating about that, and I may comment to this group the other day, and it's no reflection on the county itself or anybody within the county. But I think the ISO basically when something becomes ten years old, it kind of, am I rightly, you've been in this stuff forever. But when it becomes ten years old, I think it kind of, regardless of whether it's got ten, ten hours use, a hundred hours use, or ten thousand hours use at ten years old. And I get a little annoyed with that because when you look at, um, at, at the amount of time and amount of time on task, hours don't get depleted like one in Charleston, Columbia, or Greenville or whatever. But we're still forced to operate by the same age category with, um, with, with, um, oh heck, what am I trying to say, the? Fire regulator, what, what am I, the, what the, what am I trying to say? Uh, who's, who's the one that regulates that ten-year? ISO, we're, we're, we're forced to operate by, under the ISO regulations regardless. And I just don't think that's fair to our citizens. I don't think it's fair to, but again, I'm, I'm, you know, that's no effect to, on us, it's no, you know, no, no disrespect to our, our people. It, it's just an ISO regulation that I, I just don't think is fair. But if that be the case, I still think here's a great opportunity for us to put, take care of maybe that two-year wonder until we can build up enough FLO funds to help maybe start taking care of rolling stock.
Agreed. Yes, sir.
Didn't make the truck need to go away, but you lose points on your ISO. Especially if it's considered a frontline pumper. So, you know, they look at that pumper, can it pass pump test? Well, you get so many points if you can. But then they look at that age, and I agree with you a hundred percent, a ten-year-old truck, you know, sitting side of station, well-kept, and we do keep stuff up pretty good. It doesn't have a lot of use. It's kind of bizarre that they go by that. Because it's a terrifically expensive piece of equipment, but that is the rule.
Yeah.
And we're not going to put a lot of miles on it. And pump hours either, so, but those are the rules.
Well, again, I'm just, I'm saying it's no fault of anybody locally. It's just an ISO regulation that I couldn't come up with a term up a while ago. It just completely slipped me. But that, that's, I'm just thinking if we can use some of this money to, to take care of it up until a point that we may have enough of the FLO monies that we don't have to put too much burden on the taxpayers.
I think, uh, Mr. Iglesias made a good point about things that we can use the money for that would be good to have the money to use for. But if it's not imperative that we spend it before the referendum in November, the referendum in November could have significant consequences on our budget and going forward. So, you know, these are, these are some things that we certainly need to look at. But we need to look at them in terms of that timeline.
If it pleases the committee, um, what I think I'm hearing is to go ahead and bring the premium pay with the amendments to council for a decision. And then I think we have one more finance committee meeting in the last quarter of the calendar year. That should be after November, if I'm not mistaken. So that'll be after the ballot and that might be a good time to kind of revisit, um, comp and class, capital purchases and, um, public safety purchases. And, and I'm really encouraged by hearing, you know, trying to build a capital fund by committing FLO fees. This ARPA money could very well be the tool to buy us enough time to do that, which will save taxpayer money in the long run by, um, not necessitating borrowing money to make those purchases. So this, this could help us get there.
Well, when we bonded last with bond money, we were borrowing money at what, one, one and a half, no more than two percent? But with interest rates going up, we would be looking at borrowing probably at three, four percent. Hmm?
I'd say three, seven, five, or thirty-five percent.
Yeah, so, you know, it's going to cost more to borrow. So if we can use our own monies here and get to a point where FLO monies would kick in, I think it makes a lot more sense for the taxpayer and citizens who are actually the ones that bear the burden of all of this.
But don't you agree that if the defer, if they're deferable until after the November referendum and then it can be determined, best determined at the next finance meeting?
Yeah, I, 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 yes, I mean, I see, but I think everything in the referendum has nothing to do with rolling stock. Only physical structures.
Right, but I guess the concern would be if the referendum doesn't pass, there are some items in there that have to be done that would then require us to go into our general fund and potentially reserves and ARPA to help fund some of those things. Some of them, right, some of them won't matter, but some of them are non-deferable. That if we don't get, if the referendum doesn't pass, we're going to have to get funding elsewhere. Some of that funding would need to come from here and we might have to prioritize then.
I guess I would just like to see fire and rescue be first on the priority list. Because that has potential to protect, that, I mean, that, that is our role as council is providing fire, we're providing safety for our citizens. And, and, and again, I'd at least like to have an, an analysis from Tommy of what the fire and rescue needs are. Because I think that needs ultimate consideration. Because if we don't address that and do, we do get caught with ISO ratings going up, then our taxpayer and citizens are good, they may not look at it from us. But if their, if their insurance rates go up, they're still getting penalized because we didn't do our job of taking care of them.
So is that going to change, I guess, between now and our next finance committee meeting? If it doesn't, if that's not time critical for our next finance committee meeting, which is after the referendum, do we really need to decide on which one of these expenses?
When is our next finance committee meeting?
November eleventh, did you say, Debbie? Twelfth?
November twelfth?
Right after the election.
So when is, when is the next ISO accreditation process?
Ron, any idea?
I don't know by five, we just had ours this year. I was there for four years, I don't know by five. It's different for every day.
I guess I would still like to go ahead and have the numbers from Tommy of how, how critical it is for, for fire.
Yes, sir.
Especially.
Yeah, he presented some stuff back in February. We can dig that up and, and be ready on the twelfth to show you. Actually, we have a handful of trucks twenty, over twenty years old. So, um, there's certainly a need there. And I think at that time, uh, council will be able to consider the results of the, hopefully, consider the results of the referendum when weighing how much to do for public safety and, and when. And right now, we've already got seven hundred and fifty thousand in ARPA funds committed to public safety purchases in this year's budget. So I imagine the discussion will be how much ARPA funds for the next round, for the next fiscal year's budget.
When you go to talk about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a truck, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars is not a whole lot of money in the scope of, of a seven, or sixteen, seventy dollars.
All right, so if Tommy can have that information available to us and we'll see if it's deferable to left of the referendum or not.
One, one last item on other.
I think that date's fourteen, not twenty.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Well, one last item on other, because we do, I imagine council will want to spread this around. Economic development, um, has, the road project at MCCP one is going to, it's going to finish up later this year. And that's going to open up several sites. And I know we talked about doing some timbering work, but we're going to need some revenue to get some pad-ready sites. And so staff will probably include a recommendation of a certain amount of money to commit to getting those pad-ready sites. I don't think we, we don't have enough, we probably don't have enough to commit to a spec building. But this would get us one step closer to working towards a spec building.
Okay. If I'm not bad wrong, Alliance Engineering has already identified the areas where the pads need to be, am I correct?
I, I, we'd have to ask Rick, but I do think there is a conceptual plan. So it's subject to change and it's flexible, can move around, but I do think that that has been thought through.
I think it's based on elevation, et cetera, wetland areas, so, I think one's already been designed. And I guess when we talk about timber removal, if it is in the area of a conceptual drawing of where it needs to be, that part there doesn't need to be left with any timber at all, it needs to be a clear cut. But if nothing else, you can at least go in there and look at it. Found out with, you know, Rick's not here, but found out with like the Koreans and all, they come in and see a bunch of trees. They really don't have a visual of what can, what can happen there. But if it's an open bearing flat land and there's no need to us having trees left on a parcel, that is going to conceptually be flattened out and made into, especially down there, a red field of hard-packed clay.
I would totally agree with you. I was, uh, involved with a company from Germany that was looking to possibly locate here. We had an excellent meeting with them, they were very interested. This is before we, uh, had any of the pad-ready sites down there. We took them to the park and drove down the road and there were nothing but trees. And to us, we figure, okay, we can bring in a pulpwood group and clear this land out of trees in no time. But when you live in other countries, sometimes the. the bureaucracy you have to go through just to remove trees is significant. So they were, you, they went from a smile on their face to, okay, we're gonna, we're looking elsewhere. So it does make a difference, you need to have.
They can't, they don't, can't see the forest for the trees.
Yeah, so it, it does make a difference. All right. Okay, anything else on line item two? How about, uh, let's move on to line item three, I'm sure this is of interest to a lot of us, and it's been of interest to a lot of our constituents as well. You wanna, you wanna lead the discussion on this, or, or how do you want to do that?
I would, um, I would ask Ron to step to the mic, um, he's been helpful in getting numbers and researching and talking to his colleagues and other building officials in nearby counties, and I think he's best suited to answer your questions.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've checked around with other counties, I've, and some of our neighboring counties that use the same valuation data we use is Greenwood County, Saluda County, Lexington, Richland, and there's one other one, all using the ICC's valuation data to establish permit fees or establish value for our new structures.
Do they, do those other counties apply ratios to those ICCs?
Why, I'm sorry.
Uh, ratio values?
They use, some of them use the, the current values, some of them use the value from a year ago or two years ago. Our value is from a year ago, or a year ago last month, so we're using one that's one year old now, even with our new fees, so. They change the value, um, table two times a year, it's in February and in August. And so this August of twenty twenty-two hasn't, uh, come out yet, so. We don't know what that is, but February this year was one fifty per square foot for a new home. Uh, we're at one forty-eight based on the August of twenty-one data. So that's where, I mean, we're right in line with the, with the valuation data. And actually, if you, and, and Mr. Livingston, you probably know something about this too, being in real estate, but if you look at an actual square foot value of a new house, um, I think one forty-eight is, could be fairly low at this time. From what I'm hearing, I'm hearing numbers around two hundred.
That's changing rapidly.
Yeah, some, some of the construction costs are, are going down with materials, yeah, some of them are.
One of the things that, um, that came to my attention that didn't seem to be exactly right was, uh, there was a structure that if you looked at the entire foundation structure, there was, I forget the number of square feet, but let's use a thousand as an example. But more than half of it was in unheated open porch space, which clearly doesn't require as much cost to construct as, you know, interior sheet rock, painting, floors, electrical plumbing. And so to me, that did not seem to be right, that, that we would charge per square foot of one forty-eight for open unheated space.
Yes, sir, under, under roof, on the valuation data table, and I have a copy if you'd like to look at it. It says that include all the under roof square footage. And I realized that an open porch wouldn't be as much as a heated square footage with sheet rock and, and all the other things, but there's a great, a great variation in the unheated square footage. It could be an unheated basement that has concrete walls, concrete floor, it has all of the exterior framing and, and finish, but it's unheated in the basement, it's unfinished, it could be, it could be a sunroom. Well, most sunrooms are heated, you know, you see one every now and then, but I mean, that's closed in with glass, it could be screened. So there's a great variation, even in a garage, um, almost all garages are finished out with sheet rock. The only difference is they're unheated. And if you look at the cost of a garage door, that's probably equal to a, a finished wall with the cost of those. So, and even the code requires, um, on a single level home, the wall adjacent from the garage to the house has to be sheet rocked. If it's a two-story home with living space above, it has to be a fire-rated sheet rock on, on the ceiling of the garage. So there's a lot of variation in the cost of unheated square footage. But I do agree it's not as, as much as the heated square footage.
Buddy, you got any?
I'm trying to find the text that I, I reviewed this, but I'm, I'm fine, I mean, I, I don't, I, y'all know I don't agree with the, don't agree with the, the formula we used, I, I think it's too much. When we talk about, and I, I think Ron answered the question, I said, how long does it take for a review? And he said thirty minutes, and we're talking seven, eight hundred dollars, I don't know that anything's worth seven, eight hundred dollars for thirty minutes, that's fourteen hundred dollar an hour labor rate, so.
Mr. Livingston, there's a great amount of value in that, uh, plan review. Uh, and a lot of the value is in catching things before they get built if they're a violation. So it does, it does have a good amount of value, and, and that's, of course, the main reason for doing that, is to try to catch, you know, glass is not tempered, uh, steps may not be constructed correctly on the plans, they may have to make correction there. Some of those things would be very costly to go back and, and catch up later after, on the, on the initial inspection. Uh, be much better caught on plan review, so there's a good bit of value in the plan review. And, uh, so I think, I think is, uh, there's some merit to, and whether that fee is correct or not, that, that's completely up to county council, but I think there's a good bit of value in that, uh, plan review.
There are two things personally that I agree with, I agree, I agree with having a standard that we use. Now, whether or not our standard in the cost per square foot is the same as a standard that's used in California and New York, uh, without any, uh, ratio applied. And I don't know that, that, that's exactly where we ought to be. I think we ought to, uh, be more in line with what our actual construction costs are. And if the, if the one forty-eight is a construction cost, then that's reasonable. But I, I also believe that we ought to charge a one forty-eight for spaces that cost one forty-eight to build. And I know this is not easy on your department, you and your department to, to make a judgment call, but that's why we have you instead of a, a computer that somebody just goes to and enters in and some numbers. And, uh, your department adds the, the personal intelligence to, to look at those things and consider those when assigning, uh, a cost to a building permit. And, uh, and I don't think we should do that blindly. I think we need to be smarter than that, I think, uh, we need to be reasonable and correct and, and flexible enough that, uh, that it actually, uh, reflects the value of the, the construction.
Yes, sir.
I don't know how we do that, I mean, it's easy for me to sit here and, and make that statement, it's a hu- a whole lot harder for you to implement that, I recognize that.
That can be easily accomplished with a signed contract. Present a contract at the time we want to get your permit, and if that contract is signed by the, the contractor and the owner, then that's the number we can use.
And I think that's much more fair than what we're currently doing, and again, I finally found it. If any of you want to go to, uh, Facebook under Tad Abraham, which is our guy that we use for surveying a lot in the county, he had a two paragraph commentary, and then it's been a lot of follow-up and all. And somebody, building permits up a hundred and fifty percent, well, more than that, what cost us sixteen hundred dollars in June cost us forty-three hundred dollars in August. And then there's a whole string of, of stuff regarding taxes, et cetera, which, again, now we get blamed on county council for taxes, we're only thirty-eight percent of the school district, sixty-two percent. But this fee schedule that we got, that I so opposed at the beginning, the way it's being done, I think it could be much better handled with a signed contract by the two parties, the buyer and the builder.
But, but let me comment on that, that's really hard for us to get. They, they don't want to bring in their contracts for some reason. And, you know, if we're, if we're instructed, be glad to accept those contracts, uh, if we're instructed to, no problem, but it's just so hard to get those.
Well, maybe we should give them an option.
Maybe we should have a work session with the Home Builders Association and their.
Or we, and we, and we give them an option, you know, you can, uh, use the standard, the ICC standard, or you can bring in a contract, signed contract with a cost, and then you've got, you know, it gives the home builder, building builder, owner.
Some contracts that are cost plus fifteens could be hard to nail down to what it is. Or cost plus twenty, whatever that someone's using now. But again, you could give them the option.
I don't, you know, we, we're not gonna be able to solve this problem right now, but I think we need staff to look at what can we do to improve this fee situation? Because it's obviously, when you get that kind of increase at one time, and you've got people that, Buddy mentioned one citizen, I've had another citizen contact me that gave me some information that just did not seem to be fair. And, uh, I think that's what we need to do, we need to be fair.
Mm-hmm, yes, yeah. But as we're talking about this, I'd, I'd like to bring a point to you. And we've real, we've got some concerns about this, but I don't know of any complaints yet. As we're speaking right now, we're booking inspections for Friday, we're booked up for Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. We started scheduling for Friday. So some of the folks aren't very happy about waiting till then to get their footing inspections or whatever kind of inspection they want. So I just want to make you aware that there's a pretty good need for us to get some additional help. I know this is not the right time to bring this before you, but I want to let you know, there's some other things that are, that are have, should get equal attention, you know, to the permit fees. And we just haven't brought that up yet, but that's where we are in our department, we're three and four days behind, been like that about all summer.
And, and I will say this, based on what I have heard from contractors, again, we're coming away from the summer thunderstorms possibly, but nothing makes them more annoyed to have footings dug, and then a thunderstorm come up and pours water, and they have to re-dig those footings or, or whatever.
It's horrible, it's horrible to dig those back out.
And, and I guess to say that, with the number of building permits, which I think you can justify, I think it's justifiable totally for another position. Uh, I, I, I just, I, I see that as being almost an essential need to keep up with what's going on. And again, if you don't believe it, you just wait and you start hearing, and what I'm talking about, I'm talking about ones that I heard from before have been Andy Moore, Ted Waite, uh, Myron Cantrell. I mean, I'm talking about local people, I'm not talking about developers, I'm talking about local people that live in our county, which seems like.
Yeah.
Well, and we also know that we're gonna have a lot of growth in the housing areas.
I mean, it's gonna be essential for good inspections to be done.
Well, some of that will, some of it will be in the county, some of it.
I, I sort of try to watch the economy, you know, based on, based on everything we do. And who knows if it's gonna be a recession, who knows if the housing market's gonna slow down? I don't, I mean, you probably have a better insight to that than I do, but, uh, you never know if it's gonna continue or if it's gonna slow down, so.
Well, I, if you still look at the influx of Northerns and West Coast people, and South Carolina being one of the top ten states for those, I, I, I know I've heard some people say they want water and sewer, all counties scattered out through the county, which that's not our competience, water and sewer board. But if that starts happening, you're gonna see significant growth. I mean, now around the town of Chapeau, they've got two thousand permits pool for houses just right there in the immediate area, two thousand. And I don't want to see us be at Chapeau, I don't want to see us be at Lexington, I, I, so I'm, I'm really concerned we're gonna talk about sending water and sewer out a whole, a whole lot of wings of our county. Or Roadtown, you all look at it.
Mr. Chairman, um, on the point that Ron's raised, um, we have an executive committee meeting coming up where personnel matters are discussed, and I've asked Katie and Ron to be prepared to talk about the structure of the department, because I think the staffing needs in the department go beyond the inspections. We've got a comp plan that's being worked on with a consultant, we have subdivision reviews being done by a consultant, we have stormwater reviews done by a consultant. Uh, we don't have a planner on staff, um, so we've got GIS manager retiring in December. So we've got a robust discussion, I think we need some committee involvement on, you know, what's the evolution of the department, knowing that there's additional growth coming, knowing that Ron's, you know, I don't know if he's announced his retirement, but he's, you know, thinking about a date and, um, and, uh, so there's a discussion, and he's gonna lead that discussion with the committee. But I think that there are staffing needs in addition to an inspector, I, I, I support another inspector under the circumstances, um, but, uh, we would love to engage committee at that time in a comprehensive discussion of the department's staffing needs going into the future.
And I think you, the, the key word then was comprehensive. I think you need to talk about the entire building zoning department, what it needs, what the needs are, what the expectations are. But we also need to comprehensively look at our fee structure, because what has happened here, while we needed to make changes, I'm not so sure we made these changes the way they should have been implemented. I think there's probably some improvement here in how we charge our building fees. And I think that's also a good time, gives Ron and you a time to, uh, go back and look at this and not just tell us what Saluda does and tell us what ICC is, but, but we know that there've been some problems in implementation. And I'd like to see a proposal to improve that implementation.
We, Ron and I have discussed, um, four options for council, which we can discuss now, we can defer to executive committee.
If you're ready to discuss them now, what, what do you think, Buddy?
Well, you know, I was opposed to the knee-jerk decision we made to start with, so I'm oh, definitely open to anything. Now, Ron, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna go back, Ron, I remember going out to Pawpaw's Cabin when whoever was our last building inspector, who was that that got killed?
David Ashworth or Bill, Bill Yates?
Yes, and they got, almost killed me out there because they didn't want any change, they, they were worried about Ron. And, and again, Ron was already, I think, selective, man, and, and now they think you the best thing since sliced bread. So, I mean, you, you proved them wrong, and I guess I got a lot of confidence in you, I hate to hear the word retire coming from your mouth or, or Chris's mouth from you. Uh, but, you know, uh, I'm not one of these that's real happy about consulting or, or, or getting, um, other people coming in, but I, I'm thinking if we can contract with somebody based on not knowing where the market's gonna really go, I, I'd love to see a cost comparison between contracting and hiring someone, just because of the uncertainty of where the recession slash market's going. But, but we need somebody that's stable in your position to make sure that we continue having good people. So, you know, if you're thinking about leaving, it worries me that we don't have somebody just under your tutelage, uh, learning how you're doing things, how you're handling people, how you're handling contractors, because, uh, like I say, I almost got crucified at Pawpaw's Cabin back when that transition was. how you're handling contractors, because, uh, like I say, I almost got crucified at Pawpaw's Cabin back when that transition was made. And, and, you know, they'll, they'll quickly tell you how critical it is to have somebody there when they call for an inspection to have it so they don't have to stop work. And, and that's extremely, extremely critical to the builders.
And I've heard nothing but very positive comments about our building zone.
Absolutely. I'm, so none of these comments are about Ron. You're only implementing what council told you to do, but, yeah, I've caught a lot of flack over building permits.
But I will say, uh, on that point you just made about third-party companies, we do have a contract with Sa- we've had a contract with SafeBuild all these years. And we use them, like I was out at a conference last week, they came and filled in all last week. So we do have a third-party company already, uh, under contract. So, and, you know, if that's what you wanna consider, I mean, we basically already have that in place.
I truly trust your opinion on what you think is best with that.
Well, I don't, I, it's like I said a while ago, we don't know what the market's gonna do. If we hired somebody in here and then, and then the housing market crashed, then we'd be sitting around twiddling our thumbs some. And, but we, we just don't know. I mean, it's a gamble either way, so... And I think your insight on the, on the market, how it's going would probably be way more valuable than what I have on it. I do know that some of the construction costs, like you say, are coming down. Material cost, still hard to get some material, some of them.
Well, the, the small builders like I named a while ago, and I know there's other, the Brumbers and all those, I mean, they're not going to kill us with cost of, to the taxpayers. But when we get these developers in here, they're going to bring in mega amount of houses. And, and that's where I really feel like we need some impact fees because they need to, they don't need to walk away from here making a mint and then leaving us hanging.
Yeah.
And that ought to be part of the, uh, what's presented is impact fees, I think, when we have developments. The other thing, though, going back to the specific implementation of the fees we have now, our old building fees were seventy-five dollars versus a hundred and forty-eight.
That, that seventy-five was an estimated value because we accepted what people told us when they came in the doors.
And that, that was not a, that's not a good plan either to have somebody come to you without any kind of objective evidence and say, well, my, I'm gonna build my building for fifty dollars a square foot. Somebody else comes to you, says, I'm gonna build it for a hundred and fifty, and they're building the same building and somebody, one person, you're rewarding them for lying to you.
Yep, yeah.
That is not a good system. Uh, so we need some standardization, but again, uh, this step increase and, uh, it has been very painful for some people and, and some of it just looks to me like we need to evaluate further.
Well, that, and there can be difference in cost. I mean, for example, a person who goes and builds a house, uses vinyl flooring, uses laminate countertops.
Vinyl siding.
Vinyl siding is totally different than somebody who has monogamy flooring, um...
Brick veneer.
Brick veneer, I mean, the whole night. So th- there is a cost variation between quality of construction.
Which goes back to my point earlier, is that's why we've got people in the office that should be able to assess whether or not what's the correct fee per square foot.
But what we told them to implement had...
And that's why we've had the implementation problems and that's why I think we need to revisit it.
It definitely needs to be revisited. Shouldn't have been implemented anyway.
I do believe that if we look at the, the greatest increase, if we take an honest look at it, the greatest increase was the plan review fee. We implemented something that we had in ordinance, but we hadn't been doing before, uh, even though we had it in ordinance. Uh, plan review fee is fifty percent of the permit fee. So if the permit fee's a thousand, then the per, then the total fee's gonna be fifteen hundred dollars. Now, I do think we need to charge a plan review fee, but to, to be completely honest, that is the greatest increase, is the plan review fee.
Well, then once again, I think we need to assign intelligence to that review. We don't need to, you know, charge, like you said, five hundred dollars to do five minutes worth of work. And then another plan is a more extensive plan that requires a lot more time and we're charging the same thing for both of those. That's, we don't need to do that.
Yeah. Well, the plan review fee does vary with the square footage and overall cost of the permit, so... But it is the greatest increase.
Mr. Chairman, um, you know, I think staff and myself, uh, you know, feel like we, we recommended this together. We think it's the right direction. We understand that it's been pa- a pain point and it was a Band-Aid and not, you know, a slow progression. Um, so we, I think we feel like we're in, um, the same ballpark as our neighboring counties for the most part. And, yeah, we don't recommend a change, but if committee wants to change, we have discussed four options. Um, uh, number one, do nothing, just continue with staff's recommendation. Um, number two, provide an option to base valuation on the ICC or a contract. Give that option to the applicant. Number three, use the ICC valuation for heated space and half of that valuation applied to unheated space. Number four, use a multiplier, for example, seventy percent, and apply that multiplier to every permit based on the total permit fee, which would ju- generally be done when we know our revenues and we have a little more historic data to fund the department expense through permit fees. So we would fund seventy percent of the department expense through the permit fees. Therefore, we would use a seventy percent multiplier. Um, right now, we use a hundred percent multiplier, so we don't have any discount. And then just as a fifth option, uh, this is not recommended and generally people are applying a fifty percent fee to plan review. So, uh, that plan review, that plan gets unrolled every time there's an inspection, every time there's a phone call, every time. Um, there's a need to reference back to the plan and that happens dozens of times through the process. Um, so it's not just a thirty-minute review. There's an ongoing plan review throughout the process. But if you wanted to adjust the plan review fee, that would be another option as well. Of course, again, I'll go back to where I started, which is staff believes we're on the right track and we don't recommend any changes at this time.
And the reason that I wouldn't recommend any changes is just for what we have discussed is the need of the department or maybe another inspector. Um, and then, of course, when you do that, you bring a need for another vehicle. So, so many things come along with that. It gets expensive. We just, we just don't have that money based on where our fees were at before. Um, I think we pretty much were just hanging on with covering the, uh, you know, what we had, so...
But Christopher, is your recommendation that we start funding departments by fees?
Um, the building departments, in my experience, are not generally a hundred percent funded by the fees they generate. Um, for example, a code enforcement officer, there's no fees associated with the work that they do, but they will be housed in a building department. And so I think that's why the ICC, uh, refers to this seventy percent multiplier because most building departments are gonna have services, uh, that, uh, we apply to countywide that we have to use general fund money to fund those services or that staff position. But that, to the extent we can fund the building department because it is a fee-for-service department, they are providing a service, there's a fee that that should be mostly, and if, if possible, funded by the fees, uh, for, that are collected for the services provided. Um, because otherwise you're subsidizing that department with taxpayer money from many, many people who never need their service. So they're paying into our general fund to fund a department. And there's probably a more eloquent way of saying this, but basically taxpayers who will never need a permit are subsidizing that department because they don't need their services. A fee-for-services department like the building department or like Parks and Recs in a lot of places, while they're not a hundred percent funded by fees, sixty-five percent, seventy percent, eighty percent would be a good goal for funding those departments, uh, whenever possible.
We could, uh, we could stay where we're at for a year and then we'd have the historic data to make changes we need cha- to make once we get that year behind us.
Well, we've had July, August, and part of September now.
Two and a half months, yeah.
Uh, where if we change, we have to go back and reimburse people, I guess, to make it fair.
That'd be a nightmare for us to do that.
You wouldn't be required to do that, but I understand that there may be a desire to do that, but if, there's certainly no requirement.
Which would really mean that if we are gonna make a change, we, the quicker we make it, the better. So we don't continue to have to go back further. Um, I like the idea of having a choice between a contract with a set amount or using the ICC standard.
Well...
I, I like that option. I also like the option of reducing the non-heated square feet by fifty percent. Um, and you would be able to determine that if you're doing a plan review, is what's heated space and what's not heated.
Yeah, we determine that on every permit.
Um, and I would like, you know, frankly, I'd like to see the, uh, plan review cost decreased. Uh, so that's three, three things that I would like to see happen. I don't think we're gonna be able to, I don't know if we're gonna make a, a recommendation to council tonight between you and me, since it's only two of us.
Well, you know, that's what I wanted to do to start with. So, I mean, you're gonna catch no grief out of me for seconding the fact of doing what basically you kinda outlined just now. I mean, yeah, I never wanted to go to the limits we went. And obviously, I made a pretty good stance against that with no support. So you're not gonna hear any argument out of me to implement what you just kinda mentioned. The other thing is, you know, before you go too far, I would say it'd be great to probably poll and, and just see what, what the contractors, the local contractors, I'm not talking about developers because they're in it for mega amounts of money, but the local contractors, what works best for them. What do they see as fair? They're the ones that come in direct contact with the clients and the customers and, and, and our taxpayers.
Yes, yeah, and of course, a lot of you folks are self-building too. You know, if they're not elaborate structures, they build them themselves, uh...
I mean, you built an addition on the back of your, your land, I think, recently. I mean, did you get it before or after the new permits?
Uh, I'm in the city.
Oh, that's right, that's right. But again, it's, it's, it's kinda pretty harsh to some people out there in the, in the building world.
Well, at least for now, would you, would you accept that as a motion if I made that a motion?
Absolutely, and, and just add on it or, or exploring other options.
Okay. My motion, uh, from this committee would be to, one, uh, reduce the cost of unheated space by fifty percent. Give the homeowner, builder slash builder, a, uh, option to choose ICC values or to provide a, uh, signed legal binding contract on cost to build. And the third o- option was, I mean, the third item, um, was to reduce the building plan review, uh, amounts and, uh, reduce the plan review by fifty percent at this time and, and then we can look at gradually increasing that.
So take it to twenty-five instead of fifty percent of the permit fee?
Uh, yes.
And can we suggest that that applied to residential? The fifty percent has always applied to commercial. That wasn't changed.
We've always done commercial at fifty.
I would say for residential. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Second by Buddy. All in favor? We're in favor. So that'll be our recommendation to council.
We'll prepare ordinance to that effect for councils. We'll, we'll prepare, we'll prepare ordinance to that effect for council's, uh, first reading.
Okay, any, any further discussion?
Well, just on permit fees, but on fees in general, since it's kinda, it's there. Have we got the stuff that needs to be at the courthouse online so that this fifty percent per copy has been subsided where at least people can download it at home on their own? Because if that be the case, I mean, to make a point, this is six pages, this is three dollars worth right here. I mean, God, my. We talk about running a copy of one of those books over there. We'll have a hundred and fifty dollar book, run a copy off every council member if we want to.
The deeds. That has been a, a concern that, that's been voiced to me as well. Um, doesn't apply to building, Ron, so if you, if we don't have any...
You're good.
Or Ron, he can sit down. Thank you, Ron. Uh, but as far as the discussion, since we're talking about fees and we're talking about adjusting fees, uh, I can, I can see that doubling those fees, that's basi- basically what we did on copies. Uh, the individual that I specifically talked to said that as a result of us having those documents available online, that that would only reduce his copying needs by fifty percent. In other words, that has a, a beginning date that he has to go back beyond that to get a lot of his copies. And so making it available online, uh, is only going to reduce half of his work going forward as far as printing that he could do at home. And he's still, and some of that work, you still have to go to the courthouse for. You still can't get everything done at home. Uh, and so, you know, that's, that's something that we want, you, we'd like to talk about some more, if you will. Christopher, kinda talk that, talk us through that and give us some options.
Um, I, I spoke with the clerk, the court, it's been a few weeks, but, um, at that time, the deeds had not, the online deeds had not been initiated. But, uh, the report I got was, we're getting close, um, but I don't have an ETA on when that would start.
Well, see, this was, uh, originally told to us and was scheduled to begin quite a while back. So I'm of the opinion myself, as far as copies go, printing copies, I, I don't think we ought to be charging the full amount now until we have it. I mean, that was part of the deal was that be able to make these copies from home and they're not able to make them from home. So I'm not in favor of charging those full fees for copies until we're able to, uh, reduce that copy load.
And I think the full fee needs to be reduced from fifty to thirty-five.
Until, until the online deeds are ready?
No, I still wouldn't, even when they're online, I think it should be no more than thirty-five. Nobody can tell me that it's costing fifty cent a copy for us to implement a contract. I mean, I talked with a sharp, um, copier person the other day and I told them fifty cent. And they said, what are they printing with? What kind of ink? Um, 'cause I think they were, they were saying basically a copy should be about, cost is about fifteen to eighteen cent for a copy.
For black and white?
Black and white. Color's much more expensive, but how many of those copies that are being made in there are... So I guess I'm just saying thirty-five cent would be, I think, would cover both copier cost. I, I, I don't see us having a whole lot of people getting color copy. Now, if you wanna do a difference between... Now, if you want to do a difference between color and black and white, I'm okay with that.
Could I get with Beth and report back to the executive committee and get you a little more information? It's not on the agenda tonight for action.
Well, the only, only problem is executive, well, the executive committee, we meet October eleventh. That's still several weeks away and in the meantime, we're charging a full copy fee instead of, and we don't have the online version where the copies can be printed at home.
My personal opinion is, at the next meeting, we need to have something that we can suspend copier cost until everything's online and go back to where we were. And then we need to, I say revisit, but that, you know, there again, the fifty cent per copy, you know, my God, three pieces of papers, a dollar and a half?
You want to include it in the ordinance on the building permit fees?
No, I don't think so. I think they need to be separate. We don't want to muddy one with the other.
They were, um, and looking back, yeah. Yeah, and, um, and looking back at, um, some of the other courthouse and county fees, there were places, I think Saluda County was one. There was another nearby county that charged a dollar for a black and white map, GIS map that they could get at the assessor's office.
A map?
Eight and a half by eleven, black and white GIS map.
As I recall, there were contiguous counties that were higher and lower.
Yes.
And, and I'm sure even, you know, there's more going into printing, making a copy of a piece of paper than actually just the printing cost, because you've got people that have to help get papers. You've got people that have to put ink into copier, you've got maintenance on copiers. I mean, there's a lot that goes into it other than put a piece of paper in and make a copy of it and get it out. I, I realize that and I think that's what some of those copy fees are designed to offset the county's expenses for some of that. But if we can adjust that some downward some, I think we should. And talking with Ms. Folk is a good place to start with that too. She's primarily the, the department affected by this.
Just saying, I texted Beth to see where she stood. She said they're having to correct some numbers when we first started on the computer. Is it have numbers with As and having to change to Zeros? Hopefully they have a set. And there's some problems that they had in the transfer of records to be able to go to this automated thing. It's probably given to an individual record. That has to do with Avenue.
Yes, it's no, you know, it's not their fault as far as this transitioning to the new system, but that doesn't help the people.
I understand what you're complaining. I'm just saying that that's clear. Avenue has not created files for them to be able to do, deal with.
Well, no way am I continuing as best fault. I'm just saying that it's not online.
So it's a suggestion to go down to thirty-five cents a copy?
Eventually. It's my fault, but I mean, I mean, that's, that's, that would be the seven people sitting here.
You want to discuss it at council, since it's not an action item for tonight or? You want to come back to executive committee?
Since council voted for it at fifty cent per copy some weeks back, I think all of council should have a say in potential change.
Yes, but you want it to go through committee first and?
I just I think we're in committee. I think we need to have it in the form of an audit ordinance that can be voted on at a general meeting.
You want to do that in a form of a motion for the clerk's benefit?
Okay, uh, motion Buddy, and you want to make that a two-part motion to not only cover the cost now, but any change of cost after we have software implemented?
Yes. That's well said.
Okay, so we will, uh, the ordinance would say thirty-five cents per copy now with those copy, copy costs adjusted after implementation of the software where copies can be done offsite.
But we're not going up to fifty cent at all?
No, I said would be adjusted and at that time, we could see what we would adjust it to.
Okay.
Is that?
I, 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 I think, you know, I think it's okay. Again, we can have additional discussion with amongst the whole room at that point, because they may not agree with.
Ordinance, it's going to require three readings and it can be modified.
Yes.
So we do an ordinance amending the fees for copies at the courthouse to reduce them from fifty cents to thirty-five cents per copy. And just a quick question on both of these. I would recommend prospectively applying them. I don't know how we would give refunds for copies. And trying to do refunds on the three items that were stated in the other ordinance amendment could turn out to be extremely
Well, we, I don't see how we can refund
We can do copier.
Copies, that's just, in fact, when we were having the discussion, that was brought up and it was decided at that time that that was not feasible.
And I think when you look at the number of building permits, again, this could take some time and I don't want to take time away from Ron and his day-to-day operations, but, I mean, and again, that can be discussed amongst all seven council members. Do we go back and? Again, that'd be an ordinance, three reads.
We'll write it as prospective and then if council wants to change it to retroactive.
I'm sorry, what?
So we'll write it as prospective and if council wants to make an amendment to retroactively apply the building permit.
Yeah.
Y'all can have that discussion at council.
That makes sense.
We will do our best to have those ready for this. I don't think we'll have them, actually, I take that back. We will not have them ready for this week's agenda review. But we will get it on for the, um, October seventh meeting, I think it is, or October fifth. We'll prepare it for the October fifth meeting.
So does that mean we're not going to suspend the cost until after the readings? We're gonna just keep dragging on the fifty cent per copy?
I think once this
Can we reduce those costs without having to go through an ordinance?
I mean, I would rely on legal counsel, but my guess is they would say you need to have an ordinance to change the fee since an ordinance created the fee. My question to them would be, can we use the pending ordinance doctrine to apply a lower fee after the first reading? But I don't know what your legal counsel would say, but I can pose that question and be prepared for that at council. There's something called the pending ordinance doctrine that allows in certain circumstances to apply new ordinance after first reading. But, um, you always run the risk of an amendment at second or third reading when you do that.
Okay, well, if you can get legal review on that.
Okay. Any other discussions on fees? All right. Next item on the agenda is discussion of multi-factor authentication.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce, I don't know if y'all know Dustin Tucker with, with VC Three, but VC Three does all of our IT work and helps us keep us safe from cyber attacks and does all of our help desk responses. And staff works closely with Dustin. We do annual, we do monthly reviews of our contract and our services. And so I'll just introduce Dustin. You've probably met him before, but it's probably been a while. So he's gonna talk to you about something they've been recommending for quite some time to help keep us safe, and that's multi-factor authentication. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Appreciate it. Hello, so, um, I've been asked to keep this short and brief, but I, I really wanted to kind of talk about cybersecurity for the county. We are trying to assist the county in moving to a better cybersecurity posture, which means it keeps you safe from the bad guy, right? So one of the steps is multi-factor authentication. I, by the way, I've left some copies here.
Let me see, I got.
So if y'all need to re-review this. Kind of an updated version. Sorry, Debbie, I didn't, didn't realize you were gonna send those out.
Thank you.
Okay. So on, on page three, why is cybersecurity important? That's, that's the big question. And I always get asked, do you want to be on TV? And the answer is usually no, right? So, um, we've seen recently, in the past few years, where cybersecurity threats have really come under attack in the public domain. Oldsmar, Florida, Colonial Pipeline, Jersey City, some of these that are, that have hit recently. The old methods of doing cybersecurity protection is, you know, firewalls, protecting your perimeters, physical, uh, physical security. Well, now the attack is coming to the employees, to the end users. And this is where we have to really focus our, our monies and our time to try to defend against these kind of attacks. So on the next page, kind of what is multi-factor authentication? If anybody deals with any banks right now online, you know what this is. So multi-factor authentication, uh, there's three methods, right? It's something you know, something you are, or something you have. Everybody knows what something you know is. That's a password. That's any kind of thing, anything you log in, that's a password. Something you are. Mostly you see those on cell phones, right? I think biometrics, fingerprints, facial recognition, those kind of things. The last is something you have, whether that's getting a text message or if you have a key fob, those kind of methods. So in the next page, we have some more of the statistics of why this is happening. You guys are, we are using Office 365 for your email communications. And sixty percent of all phishing messages are targeted at Office 365. Six percent of all of them. Fifty-seven records are lost every second of every day. Ninety percent of all successful cyber attacks are in email now. They're not, they're not hackers trying to get past your firewalls. They're not people trying to come in your building. It's people coming through your email. Uh, and this next one is the, the real kicker, the average cost, four point two, two-four million. Four point two-four million. That's how much it's costing organizations. And even worse is some people don't even know they're being compromised. So they'll be, somebody will get their accounts, they'll sit into the system and then they'll start branching out. So over a hundred and eighty days, over six months, people will sit and not do anything. They're just gathering information, gathering other passwords, gathering, gathering, um, eighty, you know, their payroll information, gathering corporate secrets, any of that kind of information. And then they hit. And then the average payment right now is about five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The biggest calls, you know, some, like the sheriff's office, they are already required to do some of this stuff through some of their C G S requirements for SLED, FBI. However, now cyber insurance companies are requiring multi-factor authentication. And if you do not do that, then they won't insure you, or we've seen where premiums can double and even triple with some of our other clients. So if you're not doing it, they're gonna charge you a lot more, or they won't even cover you and you'll be stuck with the bill for the five hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So what's our first steps? We always want to prioritize anything internet facing, which is why we want to do Office 365. That's our first step. Uh, later on, as we mature, we'll go through all of our systems, but they're listed there for you. Again, at the end, I got some costs here. Uh, right now, the county, we, we have implemented about twenty-six of the hundred and ten email accounts for the county. Those folks are the ones who have county-provided cell phones. So we are sending text to county-owned devices. So we, we're about a quarter way there, but we've kind of hit a, 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 a sticking point. Now we got to figure out how we're going to get everybody else that does not have a county phone with multi-factor authentication. There are debating lines on, uh, between, uh, local governments, whether they want to ask for their employees to use their personal phones. Some lawyers have said that they think that makes it a FOIA request on their personal phones. That is not our understanding, but I'm not a lawyer, so I'm, I can't make that determination. So if we, if we wanted to at least try to ask the employees if they'll use their personal phones to get a text, certainly one time when they start and probably once every month to two months, they'll get a text when they're trying to log into their email. That's what we're asking for. And that could save the county a lot of money in the, in the end. Because if we have to go buy infrastructure, the only other real option that's viable for the county is, is the key fobs. And those, we have to put a server in, we got to buy licensing. That, that's going to cost you no more than ten thousand upfront, but then that's like eleven hundred dollars a month we got to pay in licensing, additional licensing fees. So, you know, we're trying to save the county some money by asking if we can use it, have the employees use their cell phones. But if the county doesn't want to do that, then we can certainly present the solution where we provide key fobs for, for the employees that do not have county phones. And just for fun, I just did an alternate method. I just kind of thought of a way if the county decided to provide cell phones for everybody, you know, or they give them a stipend, um, that's still gonna be, that's gonna cost you a lot of money, you know, if you, if you do, the remaining amount of people, fifty bucks stipend a month, you're still gonna pay about forty-two hundred dollars a month. So, I mean, that's, that's not really gonna be cost beneficial. So we, we think, we'd like to certainly do the, the option where we get, use the personal phones. If that's, does not, does not win, we think the only other option is, is having to put the infrastructure in to, to have key fobs. But in the end, we have got to do this. You know, you know, we've done a lot of things around cybersecurity to, to help, but this is, this is the next step. And, you know, we've got to, we've got to change with the ways and multi-factor authentication is the next step. That's all I have. So I'll be glad to take any questions though.
Well, I, I don't know. I'm kind of concerned about them using their own personal phones, but I think cost of putting a, a, a phone in everybody's hand, I, I mean, I don't know who all would have to have one technically. But I do know currently, I mean, Debbie, Karen, I'm sure y'all use y'all's phones, personal phones, probably responding back and forth to us, responding back and forth to a lot of things, if I'm not bad wrong. Am I correct?
Right, but we get, we get a small size stipend too.
Ma'am?
We get a stipend as well for the use of that phone.
I, 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 yeah, I, I get that, because I mean, like, I mean, like us as council members, I guess we can submit a forty dollar, I mean, submit a bill for forty, forty dollars for our phone. But there again, I have also been told that FOIA could then take and basically take our phone and look at everything we have on here, because it does due county business. I know a, a recent situation where an employee tried to be rehired and they, I know she does, did a lot of work from home and she was, because of so far shopping on, I guess I don't know at what level these things are going to be used against employees.
Yeah, that, that's kind of what I was trying to speak on. All we're gonna do is send it a text. It's gonna be five numbers. So there's no county data being transferred to the cell phone. So essentially, they're gonna log in, they're gonna put their username, they're gonna put their password, and then it's gonna say, we sent you, we sent you a text. A text is gonna have five numbers on it. You have to enter those five numbers into the computer.
Is that, now for clarification, if they're sitting at their desk, uh, logging into and sending and receiving Is that, now for clarification, if they're sitting at their desk, uh, logging into and sending and receiving email on a county-owned computer, will they be getting the text by their phone that they then enter in their computer?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay.
So it's just a text on their cell phone and they're entering that as the second part of their authentication into the computer. So no, no emails for this particular method. I mean, there's definitely ways you can do that, but there's, this does not add any county data to their cell phone. It is just a reference to make sure it's you is the, is the point of it. But again, I, you know, I'm not a lawyer. I, I, I certainly understand that and I would recommend talking to council. But it's, our understanding, that's not a FOIA.
And don't get me wrong, I totally agree, we got to have cybersecurity. I mean, it's, it's just, there's too many smart wicked people out there in the world who are hacking into anything they possibly can.
Yes, sir.
Now, some of the numbers you use, I've been somewhat sensationalized for presentation purposes, but it can happen.
Hey.
Let me tell you, Newberry Hospital paid ransom because they were hacked into and it caused them a lot of problems. I said paid ransom, that's probably, that probably overstepped my, my bounds there. But Newberry Hospital was hacked into and it caused significant system problems for them.
We've been hacked into Treasury's office, right? He didn't just, in our own.
Cameron and I, when we went.
So it was a.
You're right.
Association of Counties, uh, they had, uh, the first day we went down there, they had a very good cybersecurity and they suggested that we look into this because it's, she's, he said it wasn't, was not a matter of.
Yes, it's win.
It's just, it's going to happen. Eventually it's going to happen.
So I am not at all throwing daggers at this as being something we don't need. It is definitely something in today's world we've got to have.
Cameron and I, the finance, we have, um, dual with some of our, like retirement system and PIBA. We have that, but, um, they give you an option of doing your text or your cell phone that all, all employees don't have direct numbers to their, to the desk.
Right, that, that is an option. It is our understanding that that option's actually going away because it's really troublesome unless everybody has their own phone number, you know, calling a desk. And obviously if the person's, you know, works in a field or something like that, a desk phone doesn't, doesn't work. Not a good option.
So what if somebody, I can't imagine, is probably in our world, but what if somebody doesn't have a personal cell phone?
That's, the, the key fob is the, the next option.
And if you have a key fob and you have to get the, the license and the software and the hardware to support that?
Yes, sir.
Does it matter whether you're supporting it for one key fob or fifty?
That, that there's, that number scales for sure, but there is a, you know, the monthly cost would definitely go down. How about that? I, I would probably plan on the one time basically being the same. Uh, that, you got to buy the fobs and, but they're, you know, they're like twenty-five bucks a piece. But the monthly cost would be less. So we could certainly, you know, ask the employees if they're willing to do it. And if there's still a subset that will not do it, we could still do the fob solution as a third option. And it would be less.
Then that they use the fob.
Sir.
I said, we would mandate that they use the fob.
Correct, right, yes, sir.
I think most people would go up with option one, but just in case we do need to have some.
I would, uh, suit to me, I would use my phone. In fact, I'd rather have the phone because I don't want to carry around another widget.
We have had employees, and this applies to everyone who has an email address.
Correct.
You have an email address, it was a lot. But we have had, you know, employees who had email addresses that did not have a cell phone. I don't know what we have done in that place. I don't too, but I can think of it off the top of my head, but at that time we didn't have that, one of those.
But does it really have to be if somebody doesn't have a cell phone, do they need cybersecurity?
If they got an email address.
If they got an email address. That's minimally the first step. I mean, down the road, the, the goal is, you know, directly on, to log into your computer to have it as well. But this is just the first, I mean, this, Office three sixty-five is, it's real easy for somebody to be tricked into giving up their information.
With me being a county employee, with me having a county email address, I would need one, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, with that, I, I guess I'm looking at a benefit too. Would that provide additional security for my phone for anything that I have on it, such as my, my checking account, my savings account?
No, sir.
Just strictly for county purposes only?
Correct.
Okay, I was just thinking maybe it would be an incentive to get people motivated to do it if it did, if it, if it carried on.
Now, all it is is a text.
Just, okay, I got you.
Is it only through, what this is protected is the email, there's a market mail server that's.
Could be hacked.
Yes.
I got you. I was just trying to think of something that would be of an incentive to get people to do it.
I think most people would do it. I don't think many people would object to do it. It's just a matter of, we need to.
Getting an interpretation.
If it's okay for us to require that for employees who have an.
Work to me. I'm good with that thought.
I can check with legal counsel. It's not recommended to use employees' personal devices to conduct county business. I mean, that, that is not recommended. So I know that's being requested here as a, as a most efficient, best option. But we have a, you know, in a, in a ideal world, we would have issued phones to a lot more employees than we currently have. If we currently do stipends or use the personal phones when county business is being conducted on those devices. So, um, we probably need to go through an audit of figuring out who has not been issued a county phone that probably should be issued a county phone. That would resolve those employees. So we got a box of employees that probably should have a county phone and that would resolve that and bring our numbers up. You know, the, the key fob option could be a, a filler option. You know, I know you don't want to carry around two phones, but this is, you know, my, my fellow administrators and county employees have been, you know, dragging that weight around, that ball and chain around for years now. But it's certainly not recommended to utilize employees' personal phones. Um, if legal counsel advises otherwise, I would be very surprised.
But then the key fob will cost us ten thousand dollars for equipment and thirteen hundred or so.
It was like eleven hundred.
Eleven.
If that, if that's, we had to do everybody.
Yeah, thirteen thousand.
So, and you had eleven hundred is a monthly cost for licensing. Yeah, that's, if I, I just came up with a fifty dollar stipend option. If you gave, gave everybody a stipend for their personal phones.
I guess sitting here right now, my thought is, I don't think two of us can make the decision. Obviously, I think we need to look at what you get from legal counsel, what their suggestions are and then bring it before into our council.
Yeah, I agree and I think not only do we have, need a legal opinion, um, again, if we've got, we'll know better after we get a legal opinion, but if, for me, I would just as soon use my personal phone and get a four-digit number and enter it and go online. I mean, that's just.
Me too.
But we, yeah, we can't make that decision for everybody, but if we could get a, a legal opinion on it and we could discuss this further.
I, I totally agree with you. I got no problem, but my employment's not to be hinged on whether I'd go home and I'm ordering something offline and still use my phone and.
There may be a waiver that legal comes up with to say you can use your personal phone, but you got to sign this document.
Certainly, I've seen those in the wild.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I guess, you know, the, the main thing is, is, you know, we're, we're trying to advance the county and, and want you guys to be aware of the, of the, of the hurdles.
Well, I, I, I agree with Debbie and I've heard that phrase used by Todd Johnson before. It's not a matter of if, it's a matter of when.
Yes, sir.
Well, we, I think there was somebody from SLED that was there. The people that got hacked in Georgetown and one more.
Georgetown.
Administrator for.
Which, yeah.
Has some IT experience.
Yeah, he had some IT experience.
Do not ever reach.
I don't either, but I've been checking on them.
So were people among us that said they don't?
That did, so it was a mixed group.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, at this point, we've got, uh, public comments and I have no one signed up from the public to comment. And so at this point, barring anything else, I'll.
That's easy, I'll make a motion adjourned.
Motion for adjournment. So moved, uh, we are adjourned.